And my wife.
Good evening. Welcome to the December fifteenth council meeting. This is our last meeting of this year, a regular meeting anyway unless some emergency of some sort comes up. This is our regular, last regular scheduled meeting for the year. And I'm hoping that if you're out driving or about, that you're driving very carefully because the roads are very slick. So, welcome to everybody who's in the audience here and welcome to TV land. And I think we're ready to move on. Do roll call.
Mayor Willeen?
Here.
Matten?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Sheeler?
Here.
Orkin Hagan?
Here.
Coe?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Will you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Consent calendar. I understand there's a couple things that somebody wants to pull off. Is that so?
Yes.
Okay. We're not going to do that tonight, though.
Okay.
Just kidding.
You get anything you want on your lap.
My understanding is you want C, the license denial. You want that taken off?
Yes.
And I'd like to put that under... I was going to put it under unfinished business. Does that sound okay or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that'd be C under unfinished business. And then F, G, and H, the Rick Nolan's office lease, workers' comp renewal, and the two thousand fifteen sixteen settlement for the administrator. Those three items are on the PNF committee agenda, so we'll move, just move those to that and have discussion when that's brought up.
Thank you.
Is there any other changes on the consent calendar?
Remove the consent calendar with the changes identified.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Matten?
Here.
Richard?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkin Hagan?
Yep.
Coe?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
And the regular agenda, is there? Is there any change?
Move to approve the regular agenda.
Second amended.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Mr. Bevins, approval of bills and transfer of funds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The person on finance, an ISO move to approve the bills and transfers of funds as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Matten?
Yes.
President? Richard?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkin Hagan?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm up.
You're up already, yes.
Oh, my God.
Presentation of power awards.
And I have two. And one is for yourself, of course, as president. And I would like to just make a couple comments on both of the individuals that are leaving this council. Dale, to me, you have done one outstanding job. You have taken over a position that you had not planned on, but you have done it with great finesse, with great courtesy to a public as well as you've kept us on task, which I was really impressed with when you did that. But no, you have done an outstanding job. I'm going to miss you, and I know there's others that feel the same way, that you have really, really done an excellent, excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Well, I mean that sincerely. I've served on here long enough to appreciate people who are really dedicated, and that goes for Dolly as well. She was on here a short period of time, but her expertise, her background knowledge, her involvement, her looking into and asking questions and bringing comments that to me were for, especially for a newly appointed councilperson. I was impressed. I really, I'm going to miss both of you, and I mean that sincerely. I know we have two others that are going to be taking those seats. You can't be replaced. Nobody can be really replaced, but they will be sitting in where you are not going to be here for... But you're welcome back, I tell you. But I think that, I think overall, the city is really blessed to have the diversity on this council that we've had, that we have currently. And I am really, to feel really blessed and privileged to serve with such outstanding, concerned representative for the city of Brainerd. This city is blessed in a lot of ways, and one of them is the respect that we have of the council and having a new administrator as well as the excellent staff that we have. In all the years I've been on here, which is, I think, going on two or three now.
We're not talking decades.
Actually, we're talking decades. But no, the improvement from when I first got on this council to where we are at today, if you could go back thirty-seven years ago, and Mary remembers that day.
I do.
Oh, my gosh, how do we remember that day? The first thing I did, I got a digress yesterday here, I walked into a safety and public meeting. I was appointed and to serve on the safety and public works. And so I walked into this meeting and Mr. George Kria, who was our engineer, I believe at the time, and Mary were in discussion. And I mean to tell you, it was more than discussion.
No.
I thought, what in the... What's going on here? I mean to tell you, this is what I'm into, is this kind of meeting?
I've never seen Mary blush before.
But it finally calmed down and things moved on. And, but to me, I, that was my first impression of being on, serving on the city council, and I thought, oh, I hope it gets better. And it has, so... But that was, you remember that, don't you, Mary?
Well, I dearly loved George Kria, and I still do, but I mean, when I disagree, I disagree. That's the way it is.
And that's another statement, too, right? But anyway, for that, probably, Mr. Administrator, I think we'll take a picture up here by the front, and we'll give it to our, one with the longevity on here, and I'll get my camera. I could almost start a fire here with all the wood I got.
I don't see a fire extinguisher in this room either, so...
No, but we have a fire chief doing that. Anyway.
I'm not.
Mayor always looks stupid.
You got that? I think, like I say.
Trying to make noises during.
I'm going to miss the Dale.
Why don't I do that? Just for...
You don't remember?
No, I don't. But this is presenting to Dale, eight parks, in recognition and appreciation for your dedicated service as Brainerd City Council member, January first, two thousand eleven, to December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. So, thank you again, Dale.
I thought I got the box. I was going to have you with the box.
And before, I'll try and start out with this. This is presented to Dolly Madden, in recognition and appreciation for your dedicated service as a Brainerd City Council member, on thirteen, twenty fourteen, to December thirty-first, twenty fourteen. As I was ideally part, president of council myself, mayor. With that, I think, for your excellent service, as short as it was, you've done an excellent job.
Here's where she wanted the crickets.
How she looked at it.
If you don't get your camera, your phone bag, Kelly's. Yeah, let's play Kelly for everything tonight. He put it in a special foot pouch.
Why don't you talk about the awards so everyone, because it's not on the show?
Before they come up, one of the honors and privileges I had at noon today, when I thought, was to present to the family one of these plaques. And with the staff that we have, with the ordinances that we have in effect, those three people that were here today, my mother, father, and a little boy, son, were alive and well today to receive the plaque that I had made up for them. They had a carbon monoxide unit that was put into their apartment. They said that for about the last three days, they were, had headaches. They, and then they would go outside, and then they felt better. Well, about one-thirty in the morning, their carbon monoxide unit went off, so they checked it. And she says it makes a lot of noise, and so she says it kept waking us up. So, they went and looked at it, and it says, remove, or go to fresh air, or get the fresh air, or something like that. And she said that if it wasn't for that carbon monoxide unit in their apartment, they would have been planning funerals, or somebody would have been planning three funerals that morning, next morning, instead of being able to go on by presence for the family. So, they were very, very appreciative, thankful, by me. And I think that one of the things they emphasized, and we had Lakeland News was here, and she emphasized the fact that make certain for twenty dollars, it's a lot cheaper than a funeral. Much cheaper, plus the fact, if you have one, check the batteries once in a while. If you don't have one, go out tomorrow and buy one and install it. They're lifesaver, same way with a fire line. The that carbon monoxide is a poison gas, you do not smell it. It'll put you to sleep, and you won't wake up. I, she mentioned the fact that, I think there was a couple people up in Bemidji that didn't wake up. And there's been too many of them, and so her emphasis was make certain you have one. And there's regulations and prices worth, you should install them, so they are workable. So, my recommendation to anybody listening, as well as people here, make certain you have a carbon monoxide unit in your house. We, in coercion with a few people, we put together some dialogue. Do you want me to read this?
No, sir. If I could summarize it, though?
Yes, if you would.
So, the mayor felt very moved by the email that councilmember Matten read two weeks ago. So, we took it upon ourselves to try to save some more lives in Brainerd and Minnesota and throughout the state. The newspaper did do an article on the family last week, and we are doing these awards today to the family. To the staff will be a second award for following through and implement, enforcing the policies. And then a third one will be set up here in the council chambers for the council members to always remember that policies can change lives. So, what we've planned is that Tim and Jeff, I guess, will come up here and represent the building inspections, engineering department. And then after that, we'd have all the council members get up for a picture, and we put that in the newsletter, both of those, to remind everybody the importance of smoke, or CO detectors.
And I'll just read the first line on this. It says, "Policy adopted by the city council saves lives," and it did. So, would that, Jeff, Tim, if you could come up here?
It's our second picture of the day, so...
And Dale, full. Well, sometimes.
I did take a shower.
Jim, you really have to...
I don't know why.
Thank you, Dale.
Council members, if you'd like to get up for the next one, the mayor?
What do you want us to do?
We would like you to come up here for a picture.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, that's excellent work.
Stand next to Chip and tell him. Brunch together. Okay, are you ready, say cheese.
Cheese.
One more.
Probably enough pictures for one night, don't you think?
Is the chair excited?
Oh, I'm a strong believer.
I've never seen that either.
Okay. Thanks for being patient and having us go through our regimental roll, or whatever you want to call it.
Can we just have a word with the mayor making it back for another four years? And Mr. Bevins, I want to thank, and it's been a pleasure working with you, mayor, over the past, and I want to say that we really look forward with the next four years with you at the city. You, what, you have thirty-six years in now?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven years in, and you've always been well liked. You've been honest.
That depends on who you talk to. No, it's really been an honor, and I thank you for your nice comments. To me, I love this city. The good Lord has blessed me to be able to serve in this capacity, and for a little kid that was born and raised on a small farm, and come into Brainerd when I was about knee-high and all the way up, to be the mayor of a city that I've known all my life and all the changes, it really is an honor. And I thank everybody that voted for me, and I will do my best to do a good job in the next four.
And I want to also say, Mr. Bevins, appreciate working with you. I know our very first night you got sworn in, we have twenty-three votes, and it is a memorable evening and always will be in the history of voting. So, but I've always enjoyed working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheeler.
Well, he's still here. He's not going anywhere.
And I know that.
Come on, what are you thinking?
Newly relented.
Okay, let's move on to number seven.
Part of, well, tonight, everyone was welcome for the reception for the outgoing council members and the two new council members. We did have the coffee and cookies and water, so in case our two new council members wanted to say anything, Sue and Gabe are here. If you'd like to now, there will be a formal swearing-in ceremony at the next meeting in January. Hopefully, that's the next meeting. But if you'd like to get up and say some words, you're more than welcome to at this time.
Mary always said in the past that the swearing-in is what you do first, and then you get swore at later.
That's right. First, you're sworn in, then you're sworn out. The way it goes, folks.
Just a swearing in general.
Neither one of you, okay. All right, great. Well, anyway, welcome, and you guys will be on board on January fifth. Okay, council reports. Committee reports, safety and public works.
Mr. President, we have six items on the agenda. Item number one will be the stormwater utility ordinance. That'll be a first reading. Do you want an explanation now, or should we wait to pray to the first reading that we have in the council pocket? Because I was just going to let Jeff quickly explain, but motion out of committee will be, to move forward with it. So, we'll wait for the first reading. Item number two, requests for qualifications, RFQs for the airport utility extension. A motion out of committee was to approve and go ahead with it.
Second.
Other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Item number three, safe routes to school grant application. A motion out of the committee was to move forward with the grant application.
Second.
Discussion? Do you not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Item number four, Mark gave his nice presentation of the vacant building survey. If you look at the survey, basically, it's around five hundred and seven thousand square feet, five hundred and forty-one thousand square feet as of April second, two thousand nine, and five years later, it went to a million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three. But if you take the seven hundred thousand square feet out for Wassa, actually, the number would be about a hundred thousand square feet less, we'd be in the, than what it was in two thousand nine. So, there is improvement in the vacancy. You can go over more with Mark as time goes along. He did a great job bringing this all together and collecting all the data, so I think that's great. Item number five, special assessments slash citation appeal at thirteen oh nine Quinnt Street. A motion out of committee with two out of three would be to move with the citations as presented by the staff. Now it's a move.
Special to move with the citation.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I voted against it because I think it's such a waste of staff time, which is money. The process we went through, Gary had pictures on his phone of the property, which frankly, looked pretty good. And it's almost like we've got a scab, and we keep picking it and picking it and picking it. And as somebody pointed out to me at another meeting we were at, or pointed out, that, you know, don't we have better things for the staff to do? I mean, look at the staff time that goes into this. And I just think, as far as I could tell, this particular thing is resolved. I couldn't see why issue the fine. You know, maybe send him a letter and say, thank you, please be aware, please make yourself aware of city regulations, because I don't think he was, probably. I did wonder, do we have this information on our website now about permits and such? Is all of that on a website? So, if people look at the website, they know what they need to do. But anyway, that, I just thought, what a waste of time and money, that was what I thought.
And for those people that do come in, take out their permits, and spend the extra time and everything else, this is the reason why that I want to enforce, you know, our policies and our regulations against the ones that do not. So, there's a lot of people that have come up and would like not to do it either. And I don't want people to go out there if he's not enforcing this, saying, you know what? I'm going to do this, and if I get caught, I get a slap on the wrist, and I'm going to continue to go forward. And, you know, and would send the wrong signal, so... I appreciate staff all the time that they spend on this, and they do a great job, and we need to keep the enforcements going. But that, the motion was to move forward.
Comments over here, anybody? Okay, so the motion is to approve the citations and assessments as for staff. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six, enforcement action summary, and we'll slide right into, and everybody has the last sheet. There was a thousand fifty-one total. There was four hundred and fifty-one citations issued out of that. Eighty-three were avoided, voided, and six certified, thirty-six thousand, two hundred dollars in revenue. And Nathan done a wonderful job last year. And comparing this to two thousand thirteen, it's very similar. It's down just a little bit, but not much. But basically, everybody's got a copy of it, and I think the enforcement action was well done by the staff. I want to thank staff for doing a great job all year on it. And that would be the end of the report.
Mr. Bevins, you've got some extra weight on the items that are on your agenda, the ones that were pulled from the consent calendar.
Piece of cake.
I want to tie.
Item number one is done. Item number two, there are no payments to contractors this month. Item number three?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Bevins?
I think so, but they got asked there.
Thank you. Payments to contractors, would that include like, like Bron engineering? What I was looking for was Bron engineering and SEH on the water tower, if they presented their invoices for the work that they have done up to now? And I was wondering if that, have they presented that?
Yeah, in fact, I think that's included in the bills. There was one that we processed that included a Bron, and I'm trying to remember the dollar amount on it.
There was a Bron. It wasn't, it was like four thousand, if memory serves me correctly. I guess I was assuming this was just contractors, not engineering's. My misunderstanding of what you expected.
And I was just trying to keep track of what we're putting into the water towers, you know, or into a project total expense. And so when people are asking, it's not just the contractor. So, if I could have that, it would be great what the costs are for what Bron has charged for the tower and also SEH.
I think that the Bron billing was thirty-five hundred compared to, I think their original estimate was quite a bit higher. And the SEH to date, and I think they have one more coming to finish it out, but, and I think that was, I think it was like four thousand or something. So, I think, I think this one that we processed was about seven, I think. And I can't remember exactly.
I'll give you that information of what we paid.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number three is the city civil attorney contract. The motion is to approve the contract for civil legal services for two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, and ISO move?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to note that the contract is for two years, which is one of the things that differentiates from our last contract, the hourly rates, and the costs remain the same for two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, so nothing has gone up. The retainer for two thousand fifteen will be forty thousand dollars, which is the same as two thousand and fourteen. And for two thousand sixteen, it will go up to forty-four thousand dollars. It's really difficult to say how much we spend. I mean, because a lot of it depends on what we do and how much we need. I would guess that we're probably somewhere...
Eighty-five for this year.
About eighty-five thousand for two thousand and fourteen. You know, hopefully, it's a lot less, but it could be, it could, certainly could be more. You know, we don't know. Roughly, on our last, last attorney, we were in the mid and nineties.
About a ten percent reduction.
Yeah, about a ten percent reduction, so... Just some facts for those at home.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four, the two thousand and fourteen audit services. Motion is to approve the engagement and authorize the signatures, and ISO move.
Second.
Discussion? Mary?
Mr. Chair, when we did this a year ago, whichever year we go out for, for those services, I raised the issue that I thought it was probably time that we go out once again for RFPs, or at least to invite the community to come in with proposals. And it was my understanding that the council was pretty much in agreement, that we should do that periodically, and this would be the year to do it. Apparently, that was forgotten. I am, in no way am I speaking against the auditor that we've had. I simply believe that a fresh pair of eyes is always a good thing. And they will tell you that. I remember a year or two ago, talking with, I think it was Tom Coop, and said, what do you tell communities when you go to them to try to get their business? If they put out RFPs, I said, what's your selling point beyond your ability to do good professional work? And he said, well, I always tell them, a new, a fresh pair of eyes is always a good thing when you're looking at the immensity of, of that kind of work. Well, I think he's absolutely right. And so, I would like to see us hold this and go out, and that doesn't preclude them from also putting forth their own proposal. But I think we should go out periodically to those professionals with whom we contract and see who's out there, who's interested, and what we think they can provide. So, that's what I believe, sir. Thank you.
I have one question.
Yep.
How many years have this firm been here? And I know, Patrick, it'd be impossible for you to answer it, but I was just wondering.
I, I think we have used Clifton Larson Allen for twenty plus years.
Okay, okay.
So, Mary's question was, when was, when was the last time we went out for an RFP?
I think... Three years, four years ago.
So, we have analyzed Clifton Larson, even though they were the low bidder or determined to be the better bidder. We have analyzed Clifton Larson, even though they were the low bidder or determined to be the better bidder in the situation. So it's a professional service, so it is not required to be the low bidder. And so the council for twenty years approximately has felt comfortable with Clifton Larson. That's not to say we can't go out and do another RFP, but...
It's in our best interest.
So the motion on the floor is to approve this for Clifton Larson Allen, so.
With that, and I would like to continue, you know, working with them, but I also would like to see us go with RFPs also. I mean, and I know if I just go with this motion, are we going to forget the fact what Mary had asked? And is it something that could be brought up in another motion or part of this motion? You know, eventually, I don't know, next year, go for RFP? You know, I'd like to support, support that idea, you know, at least that part.
I don't know. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand completely the argument of RFPs. I guess the question that pops into my mind in supporting this motion is, how often do you want to do it?
How about every five years?
I don't think, I don't think you need, I don't think you need, that's a rhetorical question. I don't think you need an answer. The decision, and I'm thinking for myself, was not this year. Not saying we don't have a lot of things, and not that it wouldn't benefit us to do it every year. But to some degree, one could also argue that it's probably not going to be counterproductive outside of the fact that it might take some time that we're... There's a lot of things that I personally would like to accomplish in two thousand and fifteen. I just don't think this is one of them. I like this affirm. I think they've done a good job. I think we should send out for proposals on occasion, but not this year. That was just my thought process.
I'm thinking if it was just three or four years ago, you know, that's, that's not so, that's not bad at all. But Mary's point is well taken. Let's not let it fall off of, off of the radar. And granted, it would be a bit of work, but probably no more work than chasing after this guy who...
Yeah, right, right. Didn't get his permit.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Matt?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Sheila?
I'm saying yes with the fact that, you know, that's a part of this motion. Thank you.
Orkinhagen?
Yes.
Coke?
I'm going to vote against it for the reasons I stated.
Parks?
Yes.
Six to one.
Do you think it's too early to make a motion? That, I mean, if enough people truly feel that we should have...
RFPs.
RFPs, then...
I'll move, then, I'll do, I'll take your advice. I'll move that we do have RFPs on auditor services for two thousand and fifteen. We won't start that now, but then it won't be lost.
It'll be in two thousand and sixteen or sixteen.
Right.
You said second?
What? Yeah, and then every five years thereafter, although other councils could change. You want me to just leave that part out?
Yeah, just leave that.
I'll just leave that part out.
Okay, so Mary's motion is to, in two thousand and fifteen, do an RFP for two thousand and sixteen.
Right, for auditor services. That way it doesn't get lost.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close same sign?
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to item number five, the adoption of the two thousand and fifteen budget and levy. The motion is to recommend that the city to adopt a resolution whereas the Brainerd City Council is required to set a final levy at four million, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars plus one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the H R A, an ISO move.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Really more a point of clarification, there is a note regarding an additional hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in prepayments and how, and how it's possible that we could reduce the levy by that amount if we have. The recommendation from staff, and you'll see our motion reflects this, is not to do that, but to, the bond, to reduce the bond by a hundred thousand. So that would account for that. And that's, that's, I believe, what Mr. Simon will go through when that time is appropriate.
Other discussion?
Oh, Mr. Chair, we've had many, many budget meetings and a lot of information presented and good information as far as that goes. But the final decision is up to the council and not up to the staff. And sometimes I think the staff has almost too much to say about it. We are the people that the voters voted for. I've yet to vote for a city administrator or planner, engineer, or any other member of the city staff. So I think if the people look to us for this kind of representation, and I feel this budget is too much. Somewhat reluctantly, because I would still think it was too high, but I would support if we reduced it by two percent. According to figures that we received just recently from our finance person, we have, will have about additional ninety thousand dollars in this budget that isn't necessarily spoken for. There are recommendations as to how to spend it, but as I said, that's the council's decision. I would suggest that additionally, we remove forty-five hundred dollars from the fireworks proposal, which is eight thousand, five hundred, and that we would leave four thousand in for fireworks. Additionally, by referendum, we are required to pay community action one-half mil, which I think is about seventy-six thousand dollars for two thousand and fifteen in that neighborhood. And I think that if they choose not to go to other entities to make up a difference in fireworks, they could take it out of the allocation that the city by referendum gives them. I would also take six thousand dollars from the E D A funds. Now, the E D A, that's kind of, it's kind of slippery, in my opinion. The E D A funds things that I doubt would pass muster at the council. Initiative Foundation, we have nothing to say about the policies of the Initiative Foundation. We have nothing to say about the salaries they pay or any of the benefits, which I think are pretty generous. We have nothing even to say about their, what they do. And yet, we give money to the E D A who then gives it to them. I just think that's ridiculous. To me, that's not what representation is all about. Anyway, I would take that, it's been my experience in life that, almost as long as our mayor, that traditionally, department heads pad their budgets a little bit. And I don't blame them for that. I'm not being critical. I'm just saying it's a fact of life. So I'm thinking that there could be some money that will not be needed by departments. And if it isn't there, they're going to be far more likely to not spend it than if it is there. Looking at the handout that our finance person had in our packets this time, I see that our expenditures at the end of November were at eighty-eight point five-nine percent, or almost eighty-nine percent. That means we have eleven percent left, or should have. And that seems to me that we should get through December and have money left over, unless we suddenly decide to go out and have a few wild parties or something like that. So I think we're, we're okay. I think the discipline of shrinking your budget is good. I think, I think if you don't have that, you're far less cognizant of the money you're spending. I guess my overriding factor in this whole long speech is, I think it's almost a certainty that we will be selling the property and industrial park that we've discussed now for the last couple of months. I think it's very promising that that's going to happen, and that's a significant chunk of money. I think if we put this kind of a levy in, I suspect that perhaps our administrator and department heads have already got that money spent. And I'm saying no. When that money comes in, it needs to go for debt reduction and capital, which would mean we could take ten thousand, five hundred out of what's in for capital right now. Because we will have money coming in that should not be frittered away on pie in the sky that some people want. It should be for necessities and necessities only. So I will not support it as it is. I would support this budget at two percent less, even though that's far more than I like. But I would, we have four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars this year in L G A. Last year, we got three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in local government aid. This year, we got an additional fifty-one thousand. What on earth are we telling the taxpayers? That we can't manage that kind of money plus a five or six percent increase? What are we saying to people? Come on, folks, get real. So I won't support it as it is.
Other discussion?
And I'm going to echo some of the stuff. I also feel that we can drop it a little bit myself. One of the things that bothered me probably the most was the quote that was in the paper. It says, "When Dave posed this question, City Administrator Patrick Wilson explained that the cost of levy increase was feasible, but the council chose this route, although I wasn't part of the choosing." And the word feasible means possibly to do easily or conveniently. And I was hoping, you know, I mean, when it's going to be, it would have been easily to get down to two percent, you know, which is the cost of living. So I'm gonna, I'm not going to vote for this either. And I'm going to also hope that we can bring it down by a couple of percent. I see the word surplus in here, and I don't like that word either. Not after we did a fourteen percent increase last year. And I know that we talked about the strategic plan, and my staff has talked to me about it and said, you know, oh, we came up. And that's a great plan, and I approved it, but it was not to increase the levy ten to twenty percent a year to meet our plan. I was looking more at, you know, cost-cutting methods and still achieving some of the plan that we have. So I'm not going to support it either unless we can come down a couple of percent. Thank you.
Anybody over there? Kelly?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm certainly surprised, being that I was the lone voice in the wilderness crying out in the night that we had additional funds potentially from the sale of industrial park lands with zero support at the last few budget meetings, and yet, yet now we have support. That somewhat amazes me.
I think you're hard of hearing.
However...
May I proceed?
Yes. However, the two things that staff has in recommendations for any budget surpluses would be putting some money towards staff retirement. And as we know, this costs us money, and we have to pay it. You can't stay, go ahead and retire, and we'll catch up as soon as our budget catch up. You can't do that. And so we've got expectations that that will only be a small percentage of what we could need in the upcoming years. The other thing is, it's actually a very small percent, roughly twenty-five thousand dollars to put towards capital improvement. I don't think that even covers the H V A C here. So that being said, I hate to think of that as being frivolous. I don't think it is. I voted against the preliminary levy because I think we can or could drop more. On the other side of the coin, we have an obligation to certify a levy to the county by December thirty-first. You know, I don't know if forty-five hundred dollars should, should be what we're arguing about on December fifty.
We're, we're not.
So in that respect, I'm going to support this levy. We've had lots of opportunities to cut the budget and to cut what we levy since July fourteenth, when we met. But somewhere along the line, we have to approve one. And this seems like a, well, not my first choice either, something that I can support this evening to move forward. And I think we all have an obligation to curtail spending in two thousand and fifteen. I absolutely agree with that. But I suspect, especially in areas of capital improvements, we're, and we're going to be well short. So I'll support this one and see if we, four people will go with it.
Mr. Mayor?
If I could, one of the things in adopting a budget, in particular, this two thousand and fifteen budget and levy resolution, is the fact that it is a budget. We can lower or not spend all of it, but we also might have circumstances that come up where we're going to need that money. And we don't know what's going to happen in two thousand and fifteen. And by adopting the budget tonight, we have the rest of the year to see how things go, what might transpire. And to me, it's better to plan with a little extra, if there is such a thing as any extra in that budget, than it is to try and lower it at this point in time. And to me, I cannot vote, but I would say that we've gone this far, we've gone through many, many meetings of it, and I hope that the council does adopt this budget. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it's really the levy we're talking about. We know the budget can be changed anytime, but the levy, forty-five hundred is not what we're talking about. I believe one percent is forty-nine thousand, five hundred. We're talking about two percent, or about a hundred thousand dollars. And the, you can change the budget anytime, but once you've levied that money, the taxpayers have no recourse, except to pay it. That's their only choice. And there are a lot of people out there who really cannot afford those increases. I hear all this only sixteen dollars a month, or it's only a hundred dollars a year, so on. I don't know, maybe you don't know the same people I know. But for many people, that's a lot of money. And if this is levied, it will be spent. There will be things come up that somebody will want. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I agree completely. We need capital. We have got to have some capital equipment, and I agree with that. And I'm saying when that property is sold immediately earmark a hundred thousand something for capital equipment. The rest put into debt reduction so in the next two years, we aren't scrambling as we've done every year for the last two or three years, trying to figure out how to pay off the debt. You know, and as for the strategic plan, I hope we revisit it this year because I think it's, or in two thousand. I think our strategic plan is kind of a disgrace. And we should be planning more to how will we be free of debt? How will some of those things occur? Those, to me, would be far more.
Just that, I'm going to vote in favor for this as a design. I don't see any frivolity in it whatsoever. Just the fact that we weren't able to do the repairs to the building last spring now costs us, will cost us at this point in time a hundred thousand dollars more than it would have last spring. And what gives me more confidence in voting for this budget and it are done is that we've all agreed that at the beginning of the year, we are going to start working on the city budget right at the start and not wait till the last minute and scramble and throw things together and pretend like we understand what staff is trying to explain to us are needed to make not only a healthy city, but a prosperous city. And just like in business, it takes money to make money. So I don't see any frivolity here.
Anybody listen to comments?
I have just a couple, but I'll make them brief. You know, there was some explanation that I needed in that paragraph. And I know we didn't elaborate as far as why staff suggested or is making that suggestion with those proceeds. And I think it, you know, I just, I guess I needed it in more simple terms, and you explained it very well and as well as you did, Connie. So I'm going to move on to, you know, I don't think they just, staff just says things just to say things. You know, there's justification for their reasoning, and if you take the time to ask them what they mean by that and explain it a little bit better, or maybe in a little bit more simple terms, more layman's terms, it makes sense to, it makes sense to take that into consideration. I'm still very concerned that... I'm still very concerned that we would take, you're counting, you're counting your money before closing. Yes, it'll be fantastic if and when the industrial park properties do close, but when you start to depend on it, you know, I've been in real estate far too long that you never count your money until you actually can cash that check. And if you're counting on that in your budget, you'll be very disappointed when it doesn't close. So, I'm just forewarning, I think it's, I think it's poor budgeting, in my personal opinion. And if, and if this doesn't continue to go on, and if we do start to continue to nitpick on certain particular things to bring down three thousand, four thousand in certain areas, I would like to then revisit the issues that I brought forward several months ago, which I know didn't go over very well, but, you know, I look at it, that those are issues that I brought up were still a hundred thousand dollars at a pop. So, I'm, I mean, if, I guess, if I'm looking at, if we're gonna go back and revisit where we can make more cuts, then I would like to throw my two cents back in there as to where we can make more cuts if we're going to continue to discuss this. So, with that being said, that's all I...
Anything, Chip?
I'm gonna vote for this, a lot of what I...
Dave, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. We're about to say, you know, the hair, it's the hair. A lot of, a lot of my reasoning's already been said. You know, I don't believe you can, you can count your chickens before they hatch, like Dolly said. The other thing is, is I am sure that Mary is gonna make us toe the line with every expenditure. This is not the time to talk about the four thousand and the six thousand when we're doing the budget. That definitely is, and I, and I rest assured that, that we will look at those things very carefully. If nothing else, Mary will make us look at those things very carefully, and I appreciate that. But what scares me is if we don't, if we don't approve this, this budget as is, if something happens, there is no frivolity in here. It's, I think it's, it's cut pretty closely. If something else comes up, then we are without those funds, and then what do we do? And that's pretty much how I'm looking at this.
And if I could just have one more word on this, and then, really quick. You know, half of our budget, you know, basically comes from the levy, and the other half is LGA. The LGA is like a yo-yo, and that goes up and down, it can go up and down a hundred thousand or a half a million. We tend to find ourselves budgeting, and Dolly just mentioned it, don't count the, the real estate, the same philosophy should be with the LGA. If you have no idea down the road, and you staff yourself right up to with all the LGA, and then they cut the LGA, then you gotta go back and start reducing staff and making cuts, and I mentioned this before, that's why I don't think, you know, we should be always counting on this LGA as a given.
We've got a motion and a second. I'd like to do real call. Matten?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Sheeler?
No.
Orkinhagen?
Yep.
Bo?
No.
Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second part of this is a move to adopt the two thousand and fifteen budget.
Second.
Any other discussion? Probably do real call. All right. Matten?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Sheeler?
No.
Orkinhagen?
Yep.
Bo?
No.
Parks?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item six, we've got a few fire department issues. Item six A is the resignation, oh, that was a consent calendar item. Item six B, FEO staffing. We have a memo from Chief Stunek regarding the fire, the recall status of Fire Equipment Operator Cory Zian, and I have moved to approve the chief's request.
Second.
Discussion?
And what is the approval, I mean, basically, it's gonna be going on, can you explain?
The request is to, is to approve the recalls of Fire Equipment Operator Cory Zian. Basically, we have a budget that's been approved that includes five full-time equipment operators. We have recently lost one through termination, and so, the motion and the request is to fill that spot, the fifth spot, with Cory Zian.
Okay.
As long as we're in the clarification thing, the, there is no date, there's no end date on this. It's to fill that spot. Now, well, there's always a potential to rediscuss. We're going through some classification studies up, I believe the next meeting is up in the Nisswa Fire Department. Those things always affect our decisions throughout the course of the year regarding our staffing. We're gonna be discussing, as I'm sure you've all discussed, many staffing issues throughout two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Sheeler, I mean, and this is why I approved of the budget and the levy, is there's a lot of stuff we have to do to change the way we operate. I don't know for sure if changing the levy at this moment in time is actually what you're talking about. I think you're talking about a bigger picture way of how we do business, and I'm interested in that. But for now, we have to, by law, approve a levy and a budget, so I voted for it.
Yep.
I also think that we're gonna be discussing all kinds of things. An example that we've discussed is how we, how we integrate with our partners, with our fire district partners. This vote came to them, and it was unanimous, not unanimous, I'm sorry, it was five to two, overwhelming majority to keep five equipment operators. There's value there to be able to, to be able to provide a service that's second to none. I, I'm not saying we can't go against it, but we just, we've just recently gone through some issues with trying to make that partnership more of a two-way street. I think it has, I could probably argue on this one all day, and I really, I really don't want to. I really wanna, I really want to add one thing, and that's that the other thing is, you've got an employee here that's been on a little bit of a yo-yo, and we have some obligation, I think, to tell this person whether we're gonna put him on or not. And I don't think that, I know that. I don't wanna, I don't want to go into eight days before Christmas. If we're gonna, if we're gonna do it, do it, but I don't think we're gonna do it, and I don't think we should do it, and I wanna support filling that position right now, so...
And I would just offer that, from the Fire Advisory Committee representative, I've spent some time in the fire department, quite a bit of time with Cory, and we are really fortunate to have that guy here. He's, not only is he a hard worker and very physically capable, but he's got a passion for this city that I think is really cool. I really like that.
Yeah, and, you know, I just read in the paper, you know, and I'm gonna use this word, we're gonna fire a warning shot over Brainerd. And it was from the Baxter City Council, basically, that we're supposed to look at our cost and look at this whole thing and how we're operating and everything else. And the word firing a warning shot, I think, was, you know, basically in it, and that's what I'm looking at here. I mean, did we take that seriously? Are we just looking at it as a warning shot? Have we thought about sitting down and having a meeting and, and looking at our cost? Because that's what they're talking about. They're looking at the cost of, you know, that Brainerd is charging, and they're looking at their own, getting their own fire department, and we're approving this, and we're just kinda walking along and waltzing along right now, to me, without the seriousness that I felt and I saw in the paper with that comment by a council member. And I did call others after that, and there is some seriousness there about them looking at their own fire department. So, I can approve this, but I still hope that down the road, like every other issue tonight, that next year, we grab this issue and look at it.
Well, Chip, go ahead.
Those issues that you're bringing up are extremely valid ones, but ones that are already being addressed.
And from my end, I didn't, you know, I'm calling, I don't hear anything, nothing's brought to the council.
Yep.
So, you know, I'm just looking at this, and asking, Mr. Bevins, did you consider that when we're looking at this, so that at least we can send a signal back that we are looking at the cost, we are looking at our fire department, and we're gonna reevaluate what it costs to run that so that Baxter doesn't go start their own fire department?
Yep.
How many have left already of our so-called partners?
Two recently, I think Daggett Burke was before that, though.
Okay, and so, we're absorbing all the extra costs?
It's spread out per the formula that was adopted and approved by the city council this year.
Okay, but how many of the other partners are absorbing?
Everyone is.
Has Baxter is absorbing a portion of that cost?
Part of the formula that everyone shares in the total cost, with two less players, that those costs are evenly distributed per formula.
Now, if this motion tonight is approved, and then at some point, additional discussions take place as to the future of this entire situation, would Mr. Zian then be eligible for unemployment? Does I requesting Cory Zian, Zian be retained indefinitely?
He's eligible for unemployment now.
He is.
Because he's been an employee for the years that we've had him.
Okay.
If you go through the date lines, when the council in two thousand and thirteen put him on, we put him on layoff status. Before that was accomplished, we put him on recall status as of just, I think it was December, late December, and so, he's been working throughout that, for those years. And as long as he's been working, that would make him eligible for workers' comp under the state laws.
Unemployment, I think.
I'm sorry, workers' comp, yes.
Okay.
I have one more question. Whoever was in that meeting where it was five to two, the two people that voted against it, were they, and they're probably a district that currently that are part of our, you know, nine or 10 districts that we work with? Was it one of the representatives from one of the districts saying, we don't want, no, no, I don't have enough information here, but I'm trying to figure out if one of those districts is saying, you know, if you put on one more officer or one more police person, or a firefighter, we are gonna, you know, probably throw in our letter of resignation, you know, as far, as far as, you know, getting out. And I worry about these moves, you know, what's the consequences? And I don't know from your meeting, you know, what was the signal sent by those two people if we bring on more fire?
The signal was that we need to relook at everything big-picture wise, which we are just about to do now.
Okay.
And the, that particular meeting was the, I was at the Mississippi meeting instead of that one. So, I don't know exactly who that was, but that's general consensus is, have you guys really taken a look globally at, at the department and, you know, really fine-tuned it? And the other signal that they're sending is, are we really a part of this, or are you just saying that? And that's a big part of what we're gonna be going after, is if you guys wanna be a part of it, here's some of the hard decisions that have to be made.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, I've heard a couple of times, increasing the size of the department, bringing on another employee, it isn't that. This is just keeping the status quo. Okay, so, for those of you watching on TV and in the audience, we're not adding a firefighter, we're replacing. So, it doesn't increase the size of the department at all.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item seven is Congressman Nolan's District Office lease. We've got a lease in our packet, which I believe changes us from a hundred and sixty dollars a month to two hundred dollars a month.
Did we miss sixty?
Oh, I apologize. Sixty is a fire fees. Thank you, Mr. Sheeler. It's informational only.
Okay.
We talk, but, but this, it brings up a point that we just discussed, and that's how we, how we operate within, within the fire districts. This is something we talked about at a recent meeting and authorized the chief to move forward and discuss if this is something that we wanna pursue. And there's, there's issues involved with this, including legal issues, and, and the chief still has to get rid of, or get with our, not rid of, get with our, our, our legal counsel, as well as talking to our partners as to whether this would work for them, as well as the whole district. Not a five-minute discussion, all the answers aren't clear yet, but it's just a note from the chief that he's bringing us up to date, that this is a work that's still in progress, and that when there's some things finalized, which likely is gonna go into two thousand and fifteen, then he'll keep us posted. So, he's just kinda bringing us up to date that it's still, it's still something of consideration that's being worked on. I apologize. No, no motions, no votes, unless somebody has one. Item seven is Congressman Nolan's District Office lease, and the motion is to approve that the lease contract as presented with an increase from a hundred and sixty dollars a month to two hundred dollars a month. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Nice move.
Gary?
The only question I have is, if we wanted ever to, you know, use that facility, do we have a clause that says, you know, we can send out a notice to this, Mr. Nolan, and say we have other plans? I mean, or is this gonna lock us in for the solid two years? That's all I was checking, because, you know, there was some ideas floating around.
Thirty days notice.
Twenty hundred dollar amount that says termination of the five.
Okay, so, and then, the fee just was added on by, I mean, is it an increase mutually agreed upon for the fee of the two hundred from one sixty?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign? Most curious.
Thank you. Item number eight is the workman's comp renewal. I think for ease of clarification, I will break this into two. The first motion is to approve the workman's comp renewal with the League of Minnesota Cities, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign? Most curious.
And the second part of this is to move to approve staff's seeking particulars regarding workman's comp for volunteer, city volunteer coverage regarding price and coverage, and I so move.
Second.
Question?
Yeah, let's have some explanation.
Mr. Chair, I can, I'd like to, if I can, what this would cover would be, a recent example would be, one of the local civic organizations does some volunteer time and re-ruffs some of the dugouts or one of the, one of the concession stands, and a volunteer from that organization falls off the roof. We have absolutely no insurance, no workman's comp at all for that person, and, and their recourse, if they're injured, would be to sue the city of Brainerd. In, in checking with the League of Minnesota Cities, cities of our size, in a poll of twelve cities, eight of them had such insurance, so, yes.
If I can just clarify, you said workers' comp. This is under the workers' comp because they provide it to us, but it is for accidental insurance.
Okay, accident, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Make sure it wasn't two of the issues. It's just for workers' comp, I'm sorry, it's accidental.
Accidental insurance. Accident coverage, not workman's comp, because they don't work for us. Thank you.
That was the clarification.
And, Mr. Chair?
Good question.
The other thing is, is staff is just looking at getting a quote.
Yeah, they'll come back.
And when we see this cost of eight fifty to a thousand, that is not per person, that is gonna be?
That would be the total cost for the city.
Okay.
Other discussion? No thing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign? Most curious.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And our final item is the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen settlement for City Administrator, Department Heads and Non-Union Supervisors. Motion is to approve the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen wage and benefit adjustments for the city and BPU Department Heads and Non-Union Supervisors, as well as the city administrator. A brief detail, it would be a two percent wage increase effective January first, two thousand and fifteen, and again in January first, two thousand and sixteen. The health insurance changes, very similar to exactly what we've, what we've offered with some of our settlements. The base health insurance from a twenty-five hundred dollar single, five thousand dollar deductible family plan to twenty-six hundred and fifty, two hundred. Of course, that's due to the IRS regulations. Continued honor the Employee Policy Manual provisions regarding fully paid health insurance, and for employees hired or promoted after two thousand and ten, then that kicks in the ninety-five percent employer pay. And I think that's enough of the highlights. And I move to approve.
Second.
Other discussion?
I see increased the cell phone reimbursement to thirty-five dollars a month. When we began reimbursements, at least as my understanding, for cell phone, it was for people who really police fire people like that, maybe if you're inspectors out in the field or you're engineer. But now, I see we're paying for cell phone for every, just about everybody, which strikes me as kind of ridiculous. You know, I don't know why we're paying thirty-five dollars a month, or even twenty-five, to the city administrator for his cell phone.
Three of the employees in here don't receive any cell phone reimbursement.
Then why does it say it? Increased cell phone... Increased cell phone re- what?
That's for those that receive it, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Well, who are they? It's in this proposal that says it covers city administrator, department heads, and non-union supervisors.
It's there for those employees that exercise that option that is deemed, as you just said, Mary, to be necessary for.
And who are they? We should know that.
I could have gotten you a list if you had asked me earlier. I don't know if we have it here.
Off the top of my head, the police chief, the fire chief, and the city official for department heads and non-union supervisors that I know of off the top of my head.
No.
I don't think that there is anybody.
I think Jeff does.
No, I don't.
I only see Jeff, Mark, Connie, myself, we don't.
Okay.
Chris, the HR coordinator.
Doesn't, oh, there's Chris.
The only ones that I can think of off the top of my head, and Sean's union, so it would just be Corky, Kevin, and Tim.
Then I believe each of the police officers, is that correct?
Yeah, the police.
Police officers.
And then I think, I'm not sure, I'm guessing at this point, it would be important for us to get that back to you, but it's a nominal amount. It's not every single place, we just pointed out, majority of them in this room don't.
Well, could you, I'm just reading this the way it's written, and could you? I mean, it certainly is not specific to what you've just explained, Mr. Administrator. It says, and again, quote, "2015-2016 settlement for city administrator, department heads, and non-union supervisors." And a number of items are identified, and they don't say, for example, it doesn't say increased cell phone reimbursement to $35 a month. It says note was $25. It doesn't say necessarily who would be eligible, which leads one to wonder if somebody who isn't getting it wanted it. I would think under this agreement, they could ask for it and get it.
Under the city's personnel policy that you have in place, yes, if it's deemed by the department head and myself that it's necessary for that employee for, to complete their work, yes.
That's what I wondered. Then the other question I have, Mr. Chair, if I may, is what is the total cost of this? You know, we've approved a number of contracts here in the last few weeks, anyway, and I don't think we've ever really gotten a total cost. And it gets, as far as I can see, it gets confusing for us, and I can only wonder if the public has any clue, or if they see 2% increase, but it's not. It's 2% plus, plus, plus. I would like to at some point see all of this costed out, and then we'll know what actually is being received. And right now it isn't. I mean, there's various changes in the health insurance, some to the city's advantage, some to the employees' advantage, additional money in cell phone, a little reduction here in what's paid to employees opting out of health insurance, but none of it's really put into a form where you know what you're voting. That makes it really hard. And personally, I don't think the city administrator should be included. I think the city administrator, who is frankly the chief executive officer of the city, should always be separate. I think that should be a separate negotiation directly with the council and that person. And I think that's the way it ought to be, anyway. But how about getting some clarification on total cost, Mr. Chairman? What can we do about that?
We have to talk to Connie and/or Chris.
Well, I guess we have to ask our administrator to provide that.
We can put this together.
Thank you.
My understanding is that this is the same format that this council's used for more than five years.
Probably is, but.
When we looked at this, and it's not anything new to the council, so I'm more surprised than the council.
I think we, we've gotten totals. We have in the past, we've been given totals. So I don't know if they've been clarified on paper, but I know when we ask, we've been able to get them.
In this current structure, the page and the benefit is in the current budget that was presented to you at the end of November. When we settled with two unions, we went ahead and changed everybody, assuming that they would settle at the same way. So this all is reflected in the current budget.
I guess I just, I'm still not satisfied, but I guess I'll have to pursue it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think what she's asking for is basically the breakdown.
Yeah. That's what I'm asking. What does it cost? What does it cost?
My other question is, you know, and I completely understand what you're asking for in regard to the cell phone, but I'm assuming this was a highlight of the things, the items that we agreed upon in the union negotiations. So I didn't expect breakdowns of certain things, but the cell phone thing, we've had this discussion numerous times. If we're going to not increase the cell phone reimbursement, the likelihood could very well be that we would have to provide those, which could be four times the dollar amount than what they're asking. It's so nominal to have freedom to call these department heads for any one of them, and to ask them to just personally pay it out of their own pocket and not reimburse it, I think is completely wrong. So the fact that this is on there, and it's been consistent with the union negotiations that have been agreed upon already, I guess I'm kind of surprised we're having this conversation after, what is this, fifth union?
This is not a union.
Well, I mean, just as far as, you know, these are consistent with, you know, agreements that have already been made in the, in the last few. So I guess I just wanted my two cents in because it seems we want to nitpick certain particular things, and if we want, if council wants a list of people who are qualified, I would think, or that have a cell phone, or that get these specific things, this, that's not here. That's something that staff provides, you know, specifically to you, but I don't think it's a time that we're providing it, nor should you be providing it at this.
Go ahead. Thanks, Dale, yeah. No, I agree with some of the comments that Councilmember Cope brought up due to the fact that the word settlement is in there. I agree to that because that had been the historic term that had been used in there. The fact of the matter is, there was no negotiations. This is what has been the trend with the settlements that we've had. It's where tonight, we're going to have closed sessions. It's consistent, it is consistent with the proposals that we've brought before the city council with the union. There's.
We are going to have closed session tonight?
There is, we did, we were able to get some information. If you're willing to add it tonight, we can go to closed session, yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that.
If you'd like to settle another contract, actually, I can get you two, and we'll update you that. But back being, these, the word settlement, I agree, is kind of misleading to me because it's not a settlement. This is what we propose based upon what you've done with other groups. It's not anything more, and actually, as we, as Councilmember Cope talked about, there's new added expenses to the employee for health insurance. We talked about a $10 increase for phone bill, but the opt-out is going to cost employees $35 more, not extra $35, it's costing them 35 more. We are now implementing a policy where we're having singles pay for health insurance. That historically hasn't been done here. And so those are changes that we've made, and we're being consistent with all the union groups on that. So I agree, and if you want to take the administrator out, that's fine with me too. This is just what you guys have done in the past. It's totally at your discretion.
I just like the clarification, which I don't think it is. The total is not here. The total cost is something the public should know. And when we sit and wrestle with budget and, you know, nonchalantly raise it 8%, 10%, because you don't know what else to do, and we don't even know the cost of the total cost of the settlements we're making, we don't even have those costs, and we think we're nitpicking over 10, 15 bucks. I mean, to me, this is, well, I can't imagine a company that would endure, would do business
Dean, we have a motion on the floor in a second to agree to the administrator, department heads, and non-union supervisors for a, well, a settlement, but for an agreement of the same type of plan that the unions have agreed to. So with that being said, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same side? Motion carries.
End of report. Thank you.
Can I just add one more thing to that? Dean, we have discussion on this, and Mary is, seems, and I have resigned from the union negotiations. Could I make a motion, or just ask her to be part of the union negotiations so that she can be involved in it? Are you willing to accept that?
How many are left?
We have one tomorrow morning, and then another one on the 23rd, 22nd, I'm sorry.
You willing to, Mary?
I guess I could try.
What time is tomorrow morning, you call? I don't.
Four.
Do you need a motion?
Four in the morning?
Okay. Dave was joking.
Mary said she would be more than happy to be part of it, so.
Well, I'm okay.
I believe it's 10 o'clock tomorrow. Yeah, I'm certainly just not always here, because it's the 49th.
And where is it?
Right here at City Hall on the second floor conference room. So if you could be here a half an hour early to talk about strategy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to unfinished business, and this is where Mr. Steinman is here, and he is going to talk to us about bond rating. Did you come from the Twin Cities?
That's terrible.
Did you come from the Twin Cities today?
I did, and I'm happy to have slid my way here. You better stay overnight, probably be worse. It was good, when I left the city, it was 48 degrees. So it changed about royalty. So it wasn't too bad. Good to be here, mayor, president, members of the city council. We took bids today on your offering of $2,580,000 in bonds. The bid tabulation is before you on the yellow sheet, front and back. If you count up as I did, you had 28 total underwriters, resulting in nine total bids, with the winning bid being on the front page there from Piper Jaffray and Company at a true interest rate of 1.79%. The top six bids on, on this front and back page were within eight hundredths of a percent. So very, very tight bidding, and this was Springstead's second to the last sale of the year. From that, you benefited from the loss of supply and demand because the rates were very good, as you can see. Still a lot of demand out there for bonds and not a lot of people in the market right now, people getting ready for the week before, the week before Christmas and all the holidays. So, so your best bid again was Piper Jaffray at 1.79%. Also, you were selling two pieces this morning, a 1.7 million water utility revenue bond, which received a premium bid, meaning it was an offer to borrow more money than what was requested. And after our discussions this morning with, with the BPU, they had additional water costs associated with their projects, so they chose to retain that premium. Their, their borrowing stays at 1.7, the power amount stays at 1.7, and the premium goes into their account to pay additional project costs, which they have. On the improvement bond portion, you asked to borrow 880,000. You also received a premium of about 50,000 and significant amount of prepaid assessments. So totaling those two, we were able to reduce your borrowing from 880 to $725,000. So you reduced your borrowing today by about $155,000, based again upon the premium and the prepaid assessments that were received in the last month. And as we, as we do each time we're in the market, go to the rating agency and ask them to rate your obligation. We were on a rating call with Standard and Poor's, and as is in your packet, you can see that they affirmed your double A minus with a stable outlook, and really had, had five good things to say and one challenge to work on. And I'll just quickly go through those bullets. They're, they're in your packet as well, but they discussed your very strong budget flexibility. They discussed your very strong liquidity, your strong management, your adequate budgetary performance, your adequate debt and contingent liabilities, and your last, your challenge, a very weak economy with no access to a broad and diverse economy, such as the city in the Twin Cities, man, or here in St. Cloud. So all in all, were good comments, and we're happy with the affirmation of a double A minus given our process with the other rating agency a couple of months ago. So with that, I'm happy to take questions. My recommendation would be to award your bid to Piper Jaffray and Company at the true interest rate of 1.79%.
This is a lot lower than I expected. Is it the same for you, as far as?
This is, counselor, lower than, than, than we expected, yes. When we, when we ran schedules for you estimating your interest rate of, about November 5th, the market was at 2.40%. So, yes, so.
Very good, right.
Significant advantages the last week here.
Mr. Chair, that's the true interest rate, but is the actual interest weight rate, for example, as it shows, for 16 through 21, 3%, for 22 and 23, 4%, for 24, 2%, and so on? Are those real interest?
Those are the coupon rates. The true interest rate is, is how the industry determines a winning bid. So all, all of us do it the same way. And it's calculated, accounting for all of your costs and the time value of money.
But the bond buyer will get 3%, 4%, 5%, and so on, and they don't have any way to get it except from?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I had to smile as I was reading through this. I have to say this, on page three of where it says, I'm at Brainerd, Minnesota, GO, all of you who voted now for the more budget increase, you really must read this. It says, "The city projects a surplus of $100,000 in the general fund for fiscal 2014 and anticipates adopting a budget that depicts a slight surplus for 2015, and we expect revenues from LGA and property tax to remain at least flat to slight increases over the next several years." I almost laughed when I read that, so different from what we heard. This is what the bond buyers want. Yep.
Other question?
I have a motion when you're ready, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I move that we adopt a resolution awarding the sale of general obligation and improvement and water revenue bonds, series 2015A, in the original aggregate principal amount of 2,000, $2,739,385.
Okay.
Fixing to, hang on, to Piper Jaffray and Company at the true interest rate proposed of 1.7997, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing further payments.
Do we have a second? Yeah. All those in favor, say aye.
A resolution, isn't it?
It's a resolution.
Yeah, yeah. Take it.
Matten?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkinhagen?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
Hey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Happy Merry Christmas.
You too.
And say thank you. Drive back.
I think you should stay the night, it's not going to be nice.
No, it's not nice.
Hey, see ya. Sure as we get on into the night, it'll get better.
I would think so.
Okay.
Ever the utmost.
That brings us to 9B, the first reading of ordinance number 1424, an ordinance amending section 715 of the Brainerd City Code, three storm sewer, excuse me, in regards to the storm sewer utility. And that was on the safety and public works agenda, so, Mr. Sheeler? Just a quick thing, this will be adding about $100,000 additional to the current collection system that we've got, and Jeff wants to, and I know it's a lot.
And Jeff wants to, and I know it's a lot of language, but there was some tweaking from the last time we had it, and Jeff can explain it much better than I can.
Can, Mr. President, yeah, we tweaked the language in the ordinance a little bit. When we talked about the ordinance at the last meeting, we were following Mark Baxter's example, where we were projecting, or setting the rate based on an assumed seventy-five percent impervious ratio on commercial properties. And as we took a look at exactly how well that fits our situation, we ran into a number of large properties that had much less than seventy-five percent impervious coverage. And the runoff we get from a property is more related to the impervious coverage, not the lot area. So to make this a little bit more fair and a little bit more equitable, we tweaked it to establish the commercial rate based solely on the amount of impervious coverage. That way, it correlates much better with similar percentages of impervious coverage on residential properties. So in essence, it just provides a much more equitable comparison between all classes and sizes of property. We're setting the rate based on the actual amount of impervious surface.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anybody have any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, same side? Motion carries. Now we come down to nine C, the license denial for tobacco. Let's see, that was.
The only reason, Mr. President, I just wanted to pull was the liabilities, if there was any liabilities for the city to, you know, I know it was on consent, and I don't understand, can you just pull something or not? I just want to make sure that if we're gonna vote on it, that everybody is okay with it. And I don't know the liabilities of it. So, go ahead.
Did you want to let Dave, or?
Go ahead and do the liabilities for us, honestly.
Corky might be the one for that.
Actually, I think I would ask the city attorney to make any comments. He, Corky and I have been communicating about this along with county staff, and so, Eric, if you would.
Sure. You have a couple of provisions of the city code that are cited here in the police chief's memo that set forth the standards for denials of licenses. And I think the police chief did a fine job here of quoting the relevant portions. We were also in conversation about that, as to what applied, because you have a general license code that includes some standards, but then there's also a specific tobacco code, which would be at issue here as well. And it does include the relevant standards here in your memo, particularly of being convicted of a crime pertaining to the license held or applied for within the previous five years. And I think we also have in here the register of actions report here, which I believe the police chief can, I think it was thirty-five convictions, is that?
That's correct.
Correct. And they're, you know, the dates are in here, but they're, you know, as recent as 2013.
So my only question is, we will have no repercussions from this?
Well, that's a loaded question, of course.
Okay.
But your standard, or your code sets forth the standard for denials. I believe, you know, the police chief has created some findings of fact here that would demonstrate why the license would be denied pursuant to that code. A letter would then go out to the applicant, and I had recommended, I think this is in the memo as well, that the letter would include a right to appeal before the council on that.
Thank you.
Dave?
I had some questions too, I had some email communications with Corky. My question is, it says, okay, you have the right to deny, revoke, suspend, yada, yada, conviction of any crime or misdemeanor pertaining to the license held applied for. And down here, it talks about thirty-five convictions for failure to report, document, pay taxes. What's the connection between that and applying for a tobacco license?
Well, I believe those convictions all came in the course of operating a tobacco.
So he was not reporting profits made from the sale of tobacco products?
That is my understanding.
Yeah?
I think a more accurate statement was, he was not reporting any.
So, but that would have included in there, okay? Because the only thing we can talk about right now with this is the tobacco products.
Right.
All right, good.
And, you know, the connection there, just to take it one step further, is of course, if this applicant were to operate a tobacco business, they would be expected to follow those.
Right, okay. I just wanted to be clear on that, I didn't want to assume it.
Three quick things. One, are these licenses renewable every year? Are they supposed to be every year? Okay. So bringing that, I find a couple of things kind of funny. Number two, that the conduct or activity for which license sought will be contrary to the health, safety, or welfare of the public. And I think it's funny, because we're selling cigarettes, we're selling tobacco. So nobody's license should be renewed, period. But my question is, and I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, and I should have emailed you or called you, because I should probably have gotten more background information on this, but I don't see anything that's taken place as far as violations in 2014. And so that's why, and I don't see, really see anything.
That's because he was in prison.
In 2014?
Yeah.
Just this year, he was in prison?
Right.
Spending time for these convictions, for these things, so there is no violation?
Somebody else had a tobacco license.
That's why.
While he was in prison.
Because I'm thinking the guy obviously spent his time, he's paid for his crime, so, and with nothing in the last year, I can't see why we would deny it, but that makes sense.
Somebody else had the license while he was in prison.
Okay, that's why I figured I should have asked more about it. Thank you.
Kelly?
Mr. Chair, have a motion when you're ready.
Yep.
Move to deny the license.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Thank you for that.
Now, we're under new business. The listing extension for the Brainerd industrial park, thoughts?
Yes, sir, this is similar action to what the city council took last year at this exact time. Talked to the listing agent, closed converse, and obviously, they had one sale or one pending sale this time, but they're asking to continue on to be our listing agent.
And there's no cost unless they sell. So I think we should go ahead.
Is that a motion?
I will.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All same side? Motion carries.
Can I ask one more question? Did they periodically approach the council and give us an update? Have we got that?
Yeah, they've done that.
Since I've been here, I mean, they've been here since the sale, but since I've been here, they haven't come to.
I thought they usually came every six months.
So I was just, that's what I'm just wondering, if we can have.
In other words, haven't come here soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've been here.
They do present to you.
Yeah. Optimistic outlook for 2015.
Thank you for that.
Okay, I think this next one is also.
All right. Okay. Included in your packet is memorandum on proposing to consider having a workshop. Historically, the city council reviews the staff reports from city staff related to a year-end review, sort of what's been accomplished for the past twelve months. My proposal is what I've done in other cities, and it's very beneficial. We even talked to some of the other department heads that worked in other cities, and they do it there, Anoka, Big Lake, for example, where I've been at. And they have all the different committees get together with the city council, the department heads, and review all of the items that we talked about as far as what we've accomplished in 2014. The theory is, working from what Dale and the council have talked about, is that we would have the new council members come on in January, we would talk about what we accomplished. And then in February, early March, we would have the strategic planning session that we talked about would be the review of everything, the more thorough review is, council's talked about, setting the goals for, because we have two new council members.
One question I have, if I can. Public questions you mentioned on here, and then the questioning by the public, would that take away from these council members, as far as if the public kind of took over the meeting, and, or?
They don't.
Okay. It says the meeting would be open to the public. Oh, yeah.
This is like any city council meeting, meetings are open to the public.
Okay, okay.
But I think as what you guys have done is your policies, when you have a workshop offsite, you don't allow public comment.
Okay, that's.
But that's a very good question to clarify. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood, even though we were gonna hold it at a, and I didn't put the specific establishment down, just in case one of you didn't like the Legion versus the Eagles, and so I just, let us decide that, then you can.
So it is at a bar, is that what you're saying?
And then there would be a meal provided, everyone would have to pay their own meal, any visitors that would come in could either choose to have a meal or not, but there would be, we're talking about the EDA, the HRA, the Planning Commission, all of your active committees, and let's, you would make that decision on who you would want there. If you would want the airport committee there, or if we would want, I'm trying to think of other things. But I didn't include every one of the committees, because airports more of a joint powers, so, but.
You don't want us to get too long.
Great idea, thank you for doing that.
No, no, the idea is to have staff review each other's things. I will tell you that it's a very invigorating, exciting meeting about looking at the accomplishments, because too often, city council fights over a budget for six months, and then we don't get the chance to celebrate what we actually did accomplish.
Next year, it's gonna be one year instead of six months.
And it's contingent upon happy hour, right?
Not that, oh.
You know, yesterday's Don has a very nice facility.
I'm enhancing it. Yes, ma'am, there's a variety of nice ones, but that's why we didn't pick the location. If we were to try to get a very, we're looking at ten to eleven dollars is what we're looking at for a meal cost. Everyone would have the same meal, barring any gluten-free.
I'm just having olives.
Issues, but if that was acceptable to you, I'm proposing that could be maybe the first workshop of the year, that we start also setting the goals for what you want to start addressing in more details. Or if you want to do it first meeting in January, start giving us direction, we'll welcome the two new council members and hit it hard.
Thank you for doing that.
So does anybody want to make a motion?
I would make a motion and we would proceed.
All those in favor, say aye. All same side? Motion carries.
Is there anything else you want to add, Dolly, to?
I'm hoping we don't let Dolly make any more motions.
Hey, I am there. Because it's the Planning Commission, that's why I seconded it. Thank you. Sorry, Dolly.
Sorry, Dolly.
Okay.
How many chips will be allowed?
Just the potatoes?
Just the one.
Okay, Planning Commission. Mr. Oskar?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two zoning issues on the agenda tonight. The first one deals with property at seven oh five South Sixth Street. This is an example of trying to use zoning as a tool for future development and seeing it run headlong into the current problems that it can create. The property along South Sixth Street was zoned to business B four on the east side of South Sixth Street in 2011. That was anticipation of future commercial development along the strip. It created a number of nonconformities at the time. One of those nonconformities, there was an arson. The house burned down, and the building was razed, and there became an empty lot. The property stood vacant for more than a year, meaning the property owner could not reuse the property for residential purposes. What the property owner found out is she ran into a problem where she couldn't sell the property to anybody for next door, for commercial purposes, she was concerned that she was gonna have to walk away from the property, and it was gonna become tax forfeit. So she approached the planning department, we talked about some options, and probably the most direct option to get this issue resolved was to consider rezoning either the entire strip or this piece of property from B four to an R two category. What the Planning Commission decided to do was to just take this fifty by one forty piece and consider rezoning it to an R two medium-density residential zone. If approved, we'll have this forty by one, fifty by one forty piece in the strip of B four commercial zoning along the south side of South Sixth Street, or on the west side of, east side of South Sixth Street, excuse me. Well, the Planning Commission did recommend rezoning the parcel to R two, and was able to establish a number of findings of fact to guide their decision. And that's what they're recommending to the city council, is to rezone just the parcel. They do recognize that in 2015, they need to, with some urgency, want to take a look at the entire zoning again along South Sixth Street where it was changed to B four, and discuss whether or not that is to remain an appropriate zone for the rest of the corridors. That's the recommendation from the Planning Commission, is to rezone this one lot, seven oh five South Sixth Street, from B four to R two.
Everybody wanna?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same side? Motion carries.
We did have a public hearing tonight.
Pardon me?
It says first reading and public hearing.
Oh, you're gonna have a public hearing on the first reading?
Yes.
Well, we didn't have the public hearing.
No, I overlooked.
Have it now.
Well, you always had a public hearing.
I set it for the next meeting, or, yeah, just so we do it appropriately.
Was anybody here for the public meeting?
Oh, okay. I'll open the public hearing at nine sixteen, and.
I want it needed.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing at nine sixteen. Okay.
This is the best one of the year.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm sorry you didn't get a chance to influence us.
She was gonna argue against it.
Okay, so we had a motion, we had a public hearing, and approved it. Mr. Oskar?
So you have the second reading at the first reading in January, and there won't have to be the need for any changes to the ordinance, because you had a public hearing where nothing was recommended to be changed. That's why you have the hearing at the first reading. Going on to the second item, public hearing at first reading dealing with some zoning at the Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge property on South Sixth Street in 2011, when the entire city zoning map was reviewed, the Planning Commission thought it appropriate to zone that parcel property from B four to R three. Either zone is a very appropriate zone for their activity, with one, but the issue is, when Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge first came to the city several years ago to be at that property, we changed the zoning ordinance for B four to allow drug rehabilitation centers. We did that in B four only. We didn't do it for an R three zone. So when we changed the property from B four to R three, that use was not listed as a use that is permitted. Therefore, they became a nonconformity. So in order to address that situation, we had to do one of two things. Either amend all R three zoning language to permit drug and alcohol recovery centers, or change the zoning back to B four, so that they would be conforming again, and they have some plans for the future for some additions. And if the director's here, if he wants to talk about that tonight, he can. The Planning Commission has recommended rezoning the property back to B four, which it was before, and established findings of fact to support their decision, and that is the recommendation on the property.
I will open the public hearing at nine nineteen.
Good evening, council, I'll make my comments brief. It was just my understanding, this was inadvertent. Oh, I'm Sam Anderson, I'm the center director for the Central Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge at twenty-four twenty-four, business three seventy-one here in Brainerd. And thank you for a few moments. It was my understanding, this was really kind of an inadvertent rezoning. We weren't notified, we didn't know there was a rezoning that happened, nor were we aware that we were in nonconformity for the last three years. So this came up because we are hoping, and in the process of a capital campaign, to add on to our facility, to provide twenty additional beds and add additional services, a short-term licensed treatment rather than only the long-term thirteen-month program that we offer now. We would like to begin offering residential, short-term, traditional thirty-day to sixty-day licensed treatment with just an additional twelve beds, additional classroom space, and offices. I had contacted the city just saying, what? I'd contacted the city just saying, what are our next first steps? What do we need to do? And they said, well, probably another conditional use permit, but let me look into it, only to find out that the property had been rezoned back to, uh, a residential thing, and so we're just trying to fix that. There's a little bit of urgency on our part, only because we're in the process of applying for a major grant, and the grant application process has to be in, at the end of February. And, um, uh, if all of our i's aren't dotted and t's aren't crossed with the city as far as, uh, a conditional use permit for the addition, the grant will just be thrown into file thirteen by the grant, uh, granting operation, and they won't even consider it, because we, they're, they're afraid the city will not approve the addition. So, um, we have some steps to, uh, to get this rezone properly, and then apply for a new conditional use permit, uh, for the addition prior to submitting that grant at the end of February. So, we just wanted to be, uh, do our due diligence and make sure things are done right. So, and just appreciate so much all the support that we've received from the city over the years, and looking forward to expanding and growing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Is there anybody else here for a public hearing? The none have closed the public hearing at nine twenty-one.
Move to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask Mr. Oskar my question?
Certainly.
This is just first...
Thank you. Um, how is this different from Mr. Jedlinsky's request on Eighth Street, where his rezoning also go on unnoticed, which also put him into noncompliance? Yet we just left it that way in noncompliance. Yet here we have the exact same thing, which I support this one as well as I did the other one, um, and, um, also puts him in noncompliance. And the process which was defended so diligently by the planning and zoning department less than six months ago, here gets thrown to the wind and completely reversed. And I just, I question that as being mixed messages to our citizens. And I wanna know how these two cases differ.
Different set of circumstances, different location in town, different land uses, different, uh, findings that were established for each project. Um, at that location, the Planning Commission was adamant that the right thing to do was not to rezone it, talking about Jedlinsky.
Yep.
Um, that was the best thing for that neighborhood, and best thing for the future of the city in that neighborhood. That's why, and the council supported that decision, that's why it wasn't changed. That had its own unique set, set of circumstances. This has its own unique set of circumstances. This is another part of the community. The situation there is completely different than it is in the north side of town. Different set of findings of fact, different scenario. So, each one was, has a different, each one is looked at independently. It's not precedent setting. Hope that helps. Probably not.
Any other discussion? Okay. Well, did we have a, we had a...
Motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close and sign, motion carries. Okay, public forum.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a note, because I talked to one of the, uh, department heads, that we also decided to change our meetings to the third, third, um, Wednesday, starting in January, just because I know Tim wasn't aware of it, and, uh, I think he's actually supposed to be the one that's, is he not coming to the, at four thirty? That we established at four thirty?
I haven't had a chance to talk to Tim.
Okay, but I just wanted to let council know that we have officially changed our schedule for the third Wednesday instead of this...
Yes, absolutely, yeah. I didn't have a written report.
Okay.
They're talking about the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission, yes.
Okay.
Staff appreciates that.
Public forum, time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council, time limits may be imposed. Is there anybody here for open forum? No one here for open forum? I'll open the open forum at nine twenty-six and close it at nine twenty-six. Is there any addition to staff-written reports?
I do, sir.
You have to go ahead.
I'll give you a handout, uh, on Saturday, uh, Senator Rude had her, um, traveling open house. She was in Crosby, Brainerd City Hall, and then I think she went up to Pequot. Surprise to us was that, uh, Representative, newly-elected Representative Lewick and Heitzman were in attendance, uh, the, the three of them had planned it, and they walked through this, their situations. Um, uh, representatives handed out their current committee structure and their, their different meeting times for the different committees. If you'll note on the second page, it has Heitzman, Heitzman and Lewick highlighted, uh, legacy funding, uh, co-chair, and then mining and outdoor recreation for Lewick. It was a nice opportunity, um, in addition to residents, Larry Lindblad from CLC was there, and we talked about working together, making sure that the representatives had some time with council. The one thing that, uh, hearing suggested is that if it's possible, we could set up a Skype, similar to what we did with, uh, Dave when he was absent, and, um, they would like to, to update the city council with that, because it's hard for them to get back all the time. So, if it's at all possible, we might do some Skyping, sort of to update the city council on what's going down at the Capitol without having to drive two and a half hours each way.
Any other, other updates?
I'm trying to read the back here. Where did you say, what was highlighted?
Oh, in the front.
Bold. Oh, there you go, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, just that I'd like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, and also to have a very safe and enjoyable New Year. Drive safely. You're all very important to this community, and we want you to be around all of next year and the years to come. So, for that, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't have a written report, but I do want to thank the council for support and, uh, staff, and also the general public. Uh, it has been an exciting four years, and especially the last year, so, I, I honestly have, uh, I think I'll miss it, even though Mondays will be available.
I'm gonna miss, I'm gonna miss your dry jokes.
More bathrobes and slippers.
I think we all appreciate the work you've done, Dale.
Very much.